Thank you, Ken. Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started with our City Council meeting. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Flack?
Here. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you would remain standing, we'll have an invocation by -- will be offered by Jim Jones representing Blazing Grace Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. During this time, I just, you know, people are in fear. They were living in fear. And I just wanted to read out of Mark before I pray. I'm sorry, out of John, Chapter 16, verse 33. Jesus says, "These things I have spoken unto you, that in me you might have peace; in the world you will have tribulation; but be of good cheer: I have overcome the world." Let's pray. Lord God, we thank you today for the opportunity that we have to serve this city, the citizens of this city. I ask you to be with each of the council members and the mayor, and with Connie as well, and just be with them, Lord God, and bless them. Bless them in all that they do. Let them make decisions that are good for this city and for the citizens, and allow them, Lord God, to do your will. I ask you, Lord, to continue to be strong in this. Let us continue to stand and be strong, not to fear, but to be strong in you. Watch over our police, our firefighters, our EMTs, and, Lord, be with them when they go out on these calls, not knowing what they might run into. Thank you, and I pray that you put a hedge of protection around them all to keep them safe. As they do the things that others won't do, they run into danger, not away from it. So I ask, Lord God, in these things, that you would let all things that are done tonight be pleasing unto you, and bless this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Rev. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, is a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed may be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: Work Session of September 9, October 14, 2021; Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting of September 16, 2021; and Clarification in Regular Council Meetings of December 16, 2021. B, Treasurers Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurers Report for November showing cash and investments as of November 30, 2021. C, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Jeffrey Turnzer to serve as a member of the CDBG Advisory Committee, replacing Steve Ernst, who resigned. Jeffrey's term will begin January 7, 2022, and will expire January 1, 2024. D, 2021 Annual Road and Street Financial Report. Council may wish to approve the 2021 Road and Street Financial Report. The report accounts for the city's use of state highway user dollars during the past fiscal year to the Idaho State Controller as required by law.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of Agenda Item Number Three, Items A, B, and C, since Councilman Bray indicated at our clarification meeting that he wanted to discuss Item D.
Second.
And I would like to have B pulled out.
So I have a motion on the floor right now for A, B, and C, with removing D with a second. The motion has been seconded, so...
Wait, you just read, did any council member?
I just read any council member. However, there's been a motion on the floor, and with a motion on the floor, we have to act on that motion unless that motion is amended. With the motion and a second. So with that, there's a desire to remove B. But I have heard no indication of amending a motion, so with that, we have a motion by Cheatham, a second by Council President Adamson, to approve A, B, and C. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. We have D, the 2021 Annual Road and Street Financial Report, to consider.
I thought we ought to not just rubber stamp this report, because I think the city needs to understand a summary of what our street department does. And in this report, you'll find there's over $6,785,000 are used on our streets in a given year. And you'll also find that there are $331,000 used for snow removal. I think we all can appreciate that after the last onslaught we've been through. And I was reminding a couple of council members earlier that we're not very far into winter yet. When you understand, winter started the 21st of December. So we probably will way overshoot that this year when you look at the number of trucks and all the other attendant things we do with the application of the elements we put on there prior to snow, so it melts up to an inch or two, those type of things. And I just think it's really incumbent on us to understand that our street people are out there working when most of us aren't awake. If they come down my street, they wake me up. I can hear the rumble.
Are you saying, "Don't come down my street"?
No. I'm a pretty light sleeper, and that rumble of the snowplow awakens me. But I will tell you that we've really been hit hard. I presume, I cannot say this, but we have a state policeman that lives up by us. I live on the west bench in Pretty Steep on Valley View. He could not get up the street the other night. And I'm pretty sure he got on his radio and told him to come plow that street because it was a concern. And that's some of the coordination that people have between them, too. So we're at $331,000 spent in the last fiscal year, but I'm sure that we're going to go over that by the time you understand how much we've had to tack it already this year. And I just think we need to appreciate our street department for the work they're doing.
Absolutely. Tom's back here, our Street Superintendent. And just to kind of add on to that, $370,000 last year, that was last year's... And think about how much snow we didn't have last year. They're working pretty hard. I know they're working 12-hour shifts right now. They're working around the clock, and they are clearing those streets pretty good. They look dang good. And Tom, if you would, please, just make sure your employees know how much the City Council, and I appreciate their hard work while they're doing.
And I don't know if you've seen it, but a lot of places cannot find enough snowplow drivers. So that's an important thing to note as well.
I think we can add on to what Roger's talking about, too. You know, we've had a lot of snow. Now we've got a thaw that's putting water down in every little crack in our streets, and when it refreezes again, we're going to have a real problem come spring.
That's right.
And I think, you know, Tom and I were talking about this earlier. It's going to take a real effort this year and some patience on the part of our city. None of us want potholes or problem streets, but we're going to have them this year with the way this weather's cycling.
We had rain today, so...
Yeah.
Tonight we'll have snow, probably. Tomorrow we'll have rain again. It's just the way it works, so...
So with that, I move that we approve the report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Bray and a second by Councilman Cheatham to approve the 2021 Annual Road and Street Financial Report. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four is Installation of Newly-Elected Council Members and Mayor. Connie Kendo, City Clerk, will administer the oath of office to the newly-elected City Council Members and Mayor. So, Madam Clerk, you're going to start with Seat Four?
We will start with Seat Four. Josh Mansfield would...
Okay, Josh Mansfield, if we can have you come on up here. Do you know what? Can I turn you around, because the cameras are over there?
Oh, that's where Ken told you to stand.
Okay. Ken's in charge.
Please raise your right hand. Okay, I'll move. And follow me. Repeat after me. I, Joshua Mansfield...
I, Joshua Mansfield...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
Of the State of Idaho...
Of the State of Idaho...
And the laws and ordinances...
And the laws and ordinances...
Of the City of Pocatello...
Of the City of Pocatello...
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
And I will, to the best of my ability...
Faithfully perform the duties...
Faithfully perform the duties...
Of the Office of City Council Member...
Of the Office of City Council Member...
In the City of Pocatello...
In the City of Pocatello...
Bannock County, Idaho...
Bannock County, Idaho...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Heidi's running.
You know what? She wasn't wasting any time.
Not even a second.
As she's running out the door, I want to just publicly thank her for her time spent. We had a little get-together this afternoon for her, and we appreciate everybody that came to that, but she's done an incredible job, and we appreciate everything you've done, Heidi, and hopefully we'll see you soon. Thank you.
All right, raise your right hand, please. I, Linda Lurick...
I, Linda Lurick...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho...
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho...
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello...
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello...
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
Faithfully perform the duties...
Faithfully perform the duties...
Of the Office of City Council Member...
Of the Office of City Council Member...
In the City of Pocatello...
In the City of Pocatello...
Bannock County, Idaho...
Bannock County, Idaho...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Just repeat after me. I, Richard Rick Cheatham...
I, Richard Rick Cheatham...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the laws of the State of Idaho...
And the laws of the State of Idaho...
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello...
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello...
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
Faithfully perform the duties...
Faithfully perform the duties...
Of the Office of City Council Member...
Of the Office of City Council Member...
In the City of Pocatello...
In the City of Pocatello...
Bannock County, Idaho...
Bannock County, Idaho...
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God. Do you have this memorized by now? Then I'll help you along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, Brian C. Blad...
I, Brian C. Blad...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho...
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho...
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello...
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello...
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
Faithfully perform the duties...
Faithfully perform the duties...
Of the Office of Mayor...
Of the Office of Mayor...
In the City of Pocatello...
In the City of Pocatello...
Bannock County, Idaho...
Bannock County, Idaho...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So moving on to Agenda Item Five, Election of President of the Council. This time has been set aside for council to elect President of the Council in conformance with Idaho Code Section 50-702.
Ms. Clerk?
Yes?
I would like to nominate Rick Cheatham to serve as our next Council President.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Bray. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Super. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have a speech for us now?
No.
In your Batman voice?
Yeah.
I'll let you read the state of the city, and you'll be... I'll be speaking for you. All right, thank you very much. Then with that, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On January 13 at 9:00 a.m., City Council Work Session. January 20, all City Council Meetings have been canceled on this day. Other events: Christmas Tree Collection Sites will be available through January 14. Boxes will be provided at City Hall, Rainey Park on South Arthur, and Sister City Park entrance on Pocatello Creek Road for Christmas Tree disposal. Trees will be chipped and used in landscaping projects. Be sure to remove all strings, wires, and other objects to avoid damaging the city's woodchipping equipment. City offices will be closed January 17 to observe Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Garbage and recycle pickups will be on schedule. As a reminder, citizens are required to wear face coverings when entering any City of Pocatello building or facility, or while riding in public transportation buses and at the Pocatello Airport. As a reminder, please keep all sidewalks clear of snow and ice, and do not throw the snow in the streets.
Mayor, I think we need to underscore the streets, because some neighborhoods are accumulating so much snow that they piled it in great big piles. You should not put them out so far that they obstruct two cars from passing each other in the street. Need to just be aware of that, because you're not supposed to put it in there. We understand why people will do it, but they also need to not be obstructing the free travel of vehicles on their streets.
That's a good point.
That same vent, Roger, there's been a problem, too, with post office boxes, and those not being cleared for postal service delivery. I hate to admit, but we had a reminder from our postal delivery person earlier this week that that needs to be cleared out of the way so they can get to the post office boxes.
So when you're clearing your sidewalks, you're clearing your driveways, please put it on your front yard and where you're not, and you put it in the gutter area. Just put it right in the gutter area itself. If you're building a big pile of snow and it comes out into the middle of the street, that's a hindrance, and that's a problem for, number one, our snowplows, when they go through, it damages our equipment, for one, and that's a problem. And then, two, as Councilman Bray was saying, we've got traffic can't flow freely, and it needs to be able to do so. And if you don't want a nasty grab from the postal service, it sounds like... It sounds like clear your post office.
It was a nice letter.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. All right. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Seven, is a Public Hearing, Zone Map and Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This time has been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding a request from Pocatello Quinn LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, for a zone map and comprehensive plan amendment to rezone approximately 10.58 acres of property from industrial I to commercial general CG, and amend the comprehensive land use map from employment E to commercial C. The subjected property is located south of Quinn Road at the intersection of Quinn Road and Harley Drive. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all acceptable, all applicable standards with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Council members, has there been any ex parte communication in regards to this topic? Okay, I need to... The applicant, who's the applicant here? There we go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. I'm Rex Massey, representing Pocatello Quinn. I'm with Industrial Realty Group. I won't repeat the description of the proposal in front of the council. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's up on the screens. We essentially have four basic reasons for the request. First off, being at a signalized intersection at Hurley and Quinn, we think there's a better use of that property that's more suited for a signalized, high-traffic location. The second part of that is, we're going to continue to do our part to improve the aesthetics, and leaving that area in an industrial use is going to lead to equipment and outdoor yard storage areas that are not going to be complementary to that corridor and the high volume of traffic. The third aspect that we do as a company, we essentially build places for people to work, and we want to attract some services in there that will support the workforce. That's important to us. We do that at a lot of different sites. We will come forth with a kind of a commercial development that supports the workforce and makes it a more attractive place to work. And then the final reason is, we really believe, when you look at the zoning map up there, that a commercial use with essentially office to the east and office to the west, and commercial across the street, is a more compatible neighbor, in our view. And I would point out that our site currently, as industrial, is probably one of the only ones with, is the only one in the corridor currently zoned industrial. So for all those reasons, we would hope that the City Council would approve the request. Can I answer any questions?
Questions, council?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Don't go far. There may be some as we get through some of this. Thank you.
Thanks.
Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. Also, I won't reiterate the agenda item before you, but will note that there was a public hearing held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the evening of December 8, 2021. Based on information provided by the applicant, city staff, and the location, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommends approval of the Zone Map Amendment and application of Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, as well with the conditions that are outlined in the findings of fact that are before you. Also, I'd like to note that I have not received any correspondence on this particular issue, and this concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Matthew? Thank you. Madam Clerk, have we received any correspondence in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then at this time, we would open it up for anybody testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, well, unless you want to come up and say a few more words, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I think you're good. I declare the public hearing closed.
Mayor?
Councilmember Ortega?
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Seven, as written on the agenda.
With conditions.
What?
With conditions.
With conditions.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Ortega and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Eight, is a Public Hearing, Wedge Way, Right-of-Way Vacation. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Tori and Lori Schaefer, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, for the vacation of a portion of the right-of-way on Wedge Way south of 422 Spoon Drive. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Oh, before you go on, I'm sorry, I was supposed to ask, has there been any ex parte communication or contact, council? Thank you. Okay, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Sean O'Brien. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. We're at 600 East Oak Street. So we've been approached by the Shavers to vacate a portion of the Wedge Way right-of-way shown kind of in this general area. We had previously vacated the cul-de-sac further back and replatted those lots, and the Shavers have since bought those two lots and wish to combine them into one big lot and vacate this road, so it's all just one big property. Being that there's only going to be one residence associated with this new property, it doesn't make sense to have a proper right-of-way there. So we're looking to get it vacated. There are some utilities that are going to be needed to be relocated in association with the construction of the new residence, but that would occur with the building permit. So currently, we're just looking to vacate this little section of Wedge Way. Once it's vacated, we will submit a new subdivision plat for a one-lot subdivision plat, and that will combine the two existing lots with the vacated right-of-way into just one property for a new residence. And I can answer any questions at this time, if you have any.
Council questions?
Who pays to relocate the utilities?
That would be the homeowner.
The applicant?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, council? Okay, thank you. Staff?
Again, Mayor and Council members, Matthew Lewis with the Planning Department. Again, won't go through, I think gave a good explanation as to why they're vacating it. Just like to note that all property owners within a 300-foot radius of the existing property boundaries have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the proposed request. Addresses were provided by the applicant, verified and signed by a list of affidavits submitted by the applicant, and were sent by certified mail. Notice was also provided in the legal section of Idaho State Journal. One letter was received in support of the petition, which is in your packets. Based on the information provided in the application, staff recommends approval of vacating the subject right-of-way with the three conditions that are noted in the staff report. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Matt? Matt, have you received any correspondence?
I have not, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, have you received any in your office? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, Sean, I'm not going to give you the opportunity to come back up and speak more. I declare the public hearing closed. Council, these items before you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant the vacation of the Wedge Way right-of-way with conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Public Hearing, Tuscany Commercial Plaza Vacation of Easement. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Zan Orange Nielsen Trust, Living Trust, B Street Investments, and B Bad Investments, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, for a vacation of easement and easement as shown on the Tuscany Commercial Plaza subdivision.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9, Public Hearing, Tuscany Commercial Plaza Vacation of Easement. This time, it's been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by, is it Orange Nielsen Trust, Living Trust, B Street Investments, and B Bad Investments, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, for a vacation of easement and easement as shown on the Tuscany Commercial Plaza subdivision. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Council, has there been any ex parte communication?
No.
Okay. Bill, how are you tonight?
Fine, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bill Isley, 2227 East Center, Pocatillo, Idaho. We developed this plat, the interior, there's four lots, it was a hard piece, but it came out all right. And we've got Lot 2, 4, and 5 are the, 4 and 5 are the only two lots that haven't been built on in the development yet. We did the easements originally because nobody knew how people would develop the lots. Lot 4 will be an office building that the, we've already started the, it's actually into the building department now, we've got it all designed. And Lot 5 will be the future home of the 27 Palms Motel. Neither one of those will utilize that easement, and Lot 3, which is where the Alliance title is, the easement is actually in their way. They have a retaining wall on the property line, that if anybody of, any of the three lots wanted to take it out, they could, because of the easement. But all three lot owners are in agreement that the best thing to do is to vacate that portion of the easement that is shown in the red dotted lines. The motel will be accessed directly off of the cul-de-sac, and the Lot 4 office will be accessed in the front, where you come off of Via Caparatti, and a small lot in the rear, like the Alliance title building, where you come up that easement and into that lot, and then back out that same easement.
Pretty easy, it looks like. Do we have a question?
Bill, is there any, is there any formal agreement among those three landowners?
Excuse me?
Is there any formal agreement about this among those three landowners?
No, I assume that since all three joined in the request, that that would serve to connect all three.
Does that in any way encumber a future landowner if one of those properties was to sell?
Well, if the easement is vacated, it won't, it will no longer be there.
Right.
So there'd be no way for anybody to utilize the easement if they didn't own the lot, because once the easement's vacated, well then, the ownership goes to the lot lines, and there's no right for anybody else to use that portion that was an easement previously.
So you don't, you don't anticipate if, if say Lot, I can't remember what that was, can you go back to that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So if Lot 2 were to, were to change hands, would they somehow still have access to a street?
No, Lot 2 being not on the map.
I was wondering where Lot 2 is.
I'm sorry, 3, I'm sorry.
Lot 3.
Lot 3 is, is one of the owners that has applied for this vacation.
But what if the land changes hands?
Well, they take it as, as it exists at the time that they buy it.
So with whatever restrictions.
If the easement's gone, it was never there.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Bill? Sounds good. Thank you, Bill. Staff?
Good, Matthew Lewis, good evening, Mayor and council members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. Just for the record, I'd like to note that all property owners within a 300-foot radius of the existing property boundaries have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the proposed request. Notice was also provided in the legal section of the Idaho State Journal. Idaho power representatives submitted written correspondence approving their requests, which is provided in your packets. Based on information presented in the report, staff recommends approval of vacating the subject easement with the two conditions listed in the staff report. That concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Matt? Matt, have you had any correspondence?
I have not, Mayor.
Okay, madam clerk, any?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then I don't think we need to have anybody rebut, unless Bill just wants to say something, but with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, so I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides items before you, how do you wish to proceed? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Tuscany Commercial Plaza vacation of easement, subject to all standards and conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes. Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Final Plat Application, The Town Homes at City View. Council may wish to approve the final plat application submitted by Pocatello Property Development LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to subdivide 1.83 acres, more or less, into nine lots. The proposed subdivision is located east and northeast of Slay Hill, subdivision at the east end of Elm Street. Staff finds the proposed, the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 10, the final plat application for the town homes at City View, as outlined in Agenda Item Number 10, with all applicable standards and conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Wildfire Mitigation Grant Agreements and Contracts, Part 1, Science and Environment. Council may wish to authorize submission of grant funding documents through the Idaho Department of Lands, and if awarded, approve acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The proposed projects for grant funding... Just a minute, I lost it, I'm getting it. R, A, hazardous fuel reductions, HRF, or Western State's Fire Managers, WSFM, grants in the amount of $240,000 or more for juniper removal Phase 4 on city and private property. Funds may be used to procure contracted services for project planning and implementation of treatment prescriptions, juniper removal to 20 trees per acre, rental of reader boards and other outreach materials, rental of outreach vehicles, chippers, and other vegetation management equipment, and staff project implementation management. Grant funding may require a 10% match, which may be met through in-kind support or staff time, equipment used, and project outreach. And B, hazardous fuel reduction, HRF, or Western State's Fire Managers, WSFM, grants in the amount of $240,000 or more for planning and implementation of roadside vegetation treatment prescriptions, no mo, low-water vegetation treatment along high-traffic corridors with water wildfire threat, such as I-15 interchange grant funds, may also be used to purchase or rent vegetation management equipment and build staff capacity for project implementation. Grant funding may require a 10% match, which may be met through in-kind support or staff time, equipment used, and project outreach.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we authorize submission of grant funding documents as outlined in Agenda Item Number 12, A and B, and if awarded, approve acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Wildfire Mitigation Grant Agreements and Contracts, Part 2, Science and Environment. Council may wish to ratify the mayor's signature on previously signed MOU and contract documents, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review related to the following project, which has been awarded, grant-funded through the Idaho Department of Lands. Grant acceptance and authorization for the mayor to sign all pertinent documents was previously approved by council, but the project scope has been modified from $240,000 for juniper removal on the East Bench and Johnny Creek areas to $70,000 for Russian olive and juniper removal on the, in City Creek. There is no local match requirement. Work is expected to begin January 22.
January of this year? Is that right?
January 2022.
Really? Oh, I need it right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay, a question.
So why, why was it, why was it, who's, oh, there's Hannah. Hi, Hannah.
Hi.
Why was it changed from the East Bench and Johnny Creek to City Creek?
Yes, Hannah Sanger, Science and Environment Administrator. Great question. So we applied for money, we applied for two separate grants for the same project of $240,000. And they're right, awarding us initially one project, and then he said, and I have an additional $70,000 that doesn't have a match. And so I said, oh, well, we'll use it on City Creek then, where it's all city land, and so we still had, we still have the original $240,000.
Oh, so this isn't in place of?
No.
This is?
Extra.
In addition to.
Yes, in addition to, yes.
Good job.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Hannah.
Thank you. Not yet. Councilman Bray?
Mayor, I move that we approve the mitigation agreement and contracts that we authorize you to sign, the change is subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. That's right, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Transportation Alternatives Project, TAP, Grant Application, Construction of Multi-Use Pathways and Pedestrian Bridge. Council may wish to approve submission of the following grants, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grants, and authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the grants, subject to legal department review. The proposed projects for grant funding are, A, Mona Vista to Pocatello Creek Road, TAP Grant Project Application for Fiscal Year 2024, in the amount of $900,000. The local 7.34% match, in the amount of $66,060, will come from the Porton of Greenway Foundation. The city of Pocatello would have full ownership of the trail upon completion. And B, Brennan Trail Extension and Pedestrian Bridge, TAP Grant Project Application for Fiscal Year 2024, in the amount of $621,000. The local match of 7.34% match, in the amount of $45,580,000, will come from Porton of Greenway Foundation. The city of Pocatello would have full ownership of the trail and pedestrian bridge upon completion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept Agenda Item Number 14 as written, and authorize any necessary signatures.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. That's right, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Transportation Alternatives Project, TAP, Grant Application, Construction of Multi-Use Pathways and Pedestrian Bridge. Council may wish to approve submission of the following grants, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grants, and authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the grants, subject to legal department review. The proposed projects for grant funding are, A, Mona Vista to Pocatello Creek Road, TAP Grant Project Application for Fiscal Year 2024, in the amount of $900,000. The local 7.34% match, in the amount of $66,060, will come from the Porton of Greenway Foundation. The city of Pocatello would have full ownership of the trail upon completion. And B, Brennan Trail Extension and Pedestrian Bridge, TAP Grant Project Application for Fiscal Year 2024, in the amount of $621,000. The local match of 7.34% match, in the amount of $45,580,000, will come from Porton of Greenway Foundation. The city of Pocatello would have full ownership of the trail and pedestrian bridge upon completion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept Agenda Item Number 14 as written, and authorize any necessary signatures.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 15, Grant Amendment, Rural 5339 Grant Award Increase, Public Transit. Council may wish to approve or grant award amendment for the Rural 5339 Grant to increase the award in the amount of $30,000, for a total amount of $225,000, for the purchase of two buses. The federal share will be $180,000, with the required local match in the amount of $45,000. Sufficient match, sufficient matching resources are available in the rural fund for the purchase of the associated buses, the associated buses. If approved, council may wish to authorize the mayor to sign all pertinent documents, and authorize the public transit director to execute their grants, and any necessary amendments, subject to award confirmation, legal department review, and budget amendments. No city funds will be used. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve a grant amendment for the Rural 5339 Grant to increase the award in the amount of $30,000, as, oh, sorry, for a total of $225,000, for the purchase of two buses, and all the other information as outlined in Agenda Item Number 15, and authorize the public transit director to execute the grants, and any necessary amendments, subject to award confirmation, legal department review, and budget amendments.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 16, Grant Change of Scope, 5310 Small Urban Grant, Public Transit. Council may wish to approve a grant change of scope for the 5310 Small Urban Grant to utilize remaining unused grant funds previously approved by council, and complete in fiscal year 2020, for the purchase of three new bus shelters. If approved, council may wish to authorize the mayor to sign all pertinent documents, and authorize the public transit director to execute the grants, and any necessary amendments, subject to award confirmation, legal department review, and budget amendments. Local match will be provided by the Pocatello Housing Authority and Gate City Rotary. No city funds will be used. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 16, Grant Change of Scope, as outlined in our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega, thank you. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 17, is the state of the city. This time, it's been set aside for the annual state of the city report. Prepare yourself, folks. It's gonna be 20 pages long. At Pocatello Regional Airport, more economic development is happening. The city and Morton Buildings entered into a lease, and Morton broke ground last month on a 35-acre parcel, where they will have manufacturing plant, a manufacturing plant for custom buildings. In 2021, staff was assistant, with assistance from consultants, began the process to update the airport's 20-year master plan for airfield infrastructure. The plan is expected to be completed and presented to the city council in 2023. For 2022, the one-of-a-kind origami art exhibit in the terminal building will be finished. The Bureau of Land Management tanker base expansion will be bid soon, and construction is set for spring 2022, and two new airport hangars will also be finished next year. In 2021, saw the animal service... began the process to update the airport's 20-year master plan for airfield infrastructure. The plan is expected to be completed and presented to the city council in 2023. For 2022, the one-of-a-kind origami art exhibit in the terminal building will be finished. The Bureau of Land Management tanker base expansion will be bid soon, and construction is set for spring 2022, and two new airport hangars will also be finished next year. In 2021, saw the Animal Services Department install a new play yard for shelter animals as well as a security system and fire system, thanks to the help of Friends of the Pocatello Animal Shelter. The play yard is- the play yard gives dogs more room to play and allows staff for an area to work with dogs that need extra training. Animal Services also continue to develop working relationships with- with outside shelter partners, giving the city the ability to transfer long-term animals to new and different geographic area, increasing their chances for adoption. In 2021, the Building Department issued over 2,700 permits with a total valuation of approximately $91 million. This includes permits for 150 new family dwellings and 40 new residential buildings- or non-residential buildings. Overall, the inspectors performed 5,600 inspections for this year's permits. 2021 saw a record number of calls for the Pocatello Fire Department. This year, crews responded to 8,323 calls, which was up 33 calls from their previous record in 2017. I might just say, we're not looking for- to break records on calls. We're looking to drop those numbers of calls, and so- all you can do to help us with that, that'd be great. Staff worked with the mayor and council to adopt the 2018 International Fire Code and submit the department's 30-year capital plan to the Finance Department. Part of the plan included- included the purchase of three wildland fire engines, which were paid for with a federal grant, a donation from Idaho Central Credit Union, and savings within the department's budget. Also, in 2021, the Fire Department received its seventh American Heart Association Lifeline EMS Gold Plus Award. This is a true testament to the dedication of our employees. Again, this year, several of our firefighters were deployed to wildfires- wildfires across the west, including to fires in California, New Mexico, Utah, Wyoming, and different regions in Idaho. One Engine Crew also provided coverage in the Caribou Tarji National Forest. The Information Technology Department in 2021 was another big year for cyber- cybersecurity. The department utilized the new Departments of Homeland Security malicious domain blocking and reporting tool to analyze a weekly average of 2,748,827 internet clicks. This tool blocked an average of 811 clicks per week to help maintain the integrity of the city's computer system. The department also continued to provide refresher training on cybersecurity to all employees who use the network. The department also unveiled the newly redesigned city website in February of 2021. The new look incorporates Pocatello's flag, as well as photo- a photo slideshow featuring work by local photographers Eric Gordon, Charles Peterson, and Rob Kirkham, as well as the in-house camera talents of Chris Orson and Ken Wilson, and the sketch of the valley drawn by former employee Maggie Clark. In 2021, more than 30 Pocatello businesses and organizations affected by the COVID-19 pandemic received assistance from the city's small business grant program. The city council set aside $250,000 from the city's allocation from Governor Brad Little's Coronavirus Financial Advisory Committee for local businesses. Businesses received up to $10,000 for qualified expenses related to COVID-19, and grant size ranged from $10,000 to $500. The mayor and city council department received two awards at the Association of Idaho Cities Annual Conference. The first recognizing the outstanding work of former Public Information Officer Logan McDougall for his efforts with Pocatello's COVID-19 Stay Smart, Stay Safe, Stay Open campaign. This campaign was a joint effort between the city, Southeast Idaho Public Health, Idaho State University, Porton of Health Partners, Pocatello Chubbick School District 25, and the Pocatello Chubbick Chamber of Commerce. The second award was honored the mayor's youth advisory council, who hosted an Essentials Needs Drive for those less fortunate in our community. Donations collected were given to St. Vincent de Paul, Valley Mission, Sika, God's Home of Compassion Pantry, and Gate City Christian Church Pantry. In October, outgoing city council president Heidi Adanson helped the League of Idaho Cities kick off its Readers Becoming Leaders program by reading the Friends City book to third graders at Wilcox Elementary School. Students learned about city government and the services we provide. Employees and equipment from the Public Works Police and Fire Departments were also present to highlight what city government does. The department also worked with Bennett County Elections Office on the November general election and mayoral runoff election. In 2021, the Parks and Recreation Department debuted its partnership program to the community. This program provides opportunity for community partners to help the department realize significant projects and improvements to the park system. As a result, the department successfully partnered with Connections Credit Union for construction of the new Zoo Idaho Connections Entrance and Gift Shop Building, which is set to open for 2022 season. Zoo Idaho Zoological Society for the purchase and the donation of the log cabin building structure. Western State- Western State's Caterpillar for development of new- of a new pathway connecting the Zoo Idaho's lower and upper levels with ADA-accessible paths via the zoo's south side running adjacent to the Rocky Mountain Elk Exhibit and continuing south along the basalt rocks at Rock Edge. Parks and Recreation staff also worked together with Idaho Gold Star Families Memorial Monument Committee to proudly bring to Idaho- or proudly bring the Idaho Gold Star Families Memorial Monument to Pocatello. On May 28, 2021, the monument was unveiled to the community. This beautiful monument is dedicated to honoring and remembering the following- the fallen and their families who bear the loss of a loved one in military service to our nation. I might add, it is the only one in the state of Idaho, and it's an honor to be able to have that in our- in our community. If you haven't seen it, please go up and take a look at it, even in this cold snow. It's- it's amazing. In 2021, also saw the department make improvements at Halliwell Ball Field in collaboration with the Pocatello American Legion Baseball. And School District Number 25, synthetic turf was installed at the pitcher's mound and home plate in time for the 2021 season. Staff also completed a replacement of infield material as part of the improvement. Cemetery staff completed development of Sections Number 56 and 57 at the southern end of Mountain View Cemetery. This work, completed entirely by in-house staff, included large-scale grading and debris removal, installation of extensive irrigation system, additions- additions, tree planting, hydroseeding, and construction of asphalt paths. The 2022 goal for the Parks and Recreation Department include having the city council adopt the final Ross Park Master Plan, as well as to continue working with the community partners to make improvements to help all of us play often and live better. The Pocatello Police Department worked cooperatively with stakeholders to improve service levels with an eye toward cost. Their efforts resulted in approximately $600,000 of personnel and equipment being added using additional funding, grants, and program fees. In 2021, one of the department's K-9 officers passed away. But as a result of the generosity- generous donation from the Phil Meader family, K-9 Officer Thor has been hired. K-9 Thor has just finished 480 hours of training and will be working the streets of Pocatello very soon. Looking to 2022, the department plans to reorganize the animal control, code enforcement, licensing, and parking officers into one singular ordinance enforcement unit to enhance responsiveness. A full-time internet crimes against children officer will be added to the ranks, thanks to a grant from the state of Idaho. This individual will be working to protect our youth from online predators. The department will also work to hire and maintain patrol officers, as well as continue to offer top-notch training and leadership opportunities to our office- to our officers. The Public Works Director implemented the city's energy task force and facilitated an energy audit for the city of Pocatello. The Engineering Department made strides on many important projects this year. All of the right-of-way property- property was acquired for the Hawthorne and Quinn Intersection Project. Our community rating system for flood plan insurance was updated, as was the department's ordinance- ordinances. Staff also supplied design to- design and construction support for city projects like Bullock Street Water Line Extension, Whitman Lift Station Rehabilitation, and the Nordic Center new pad for their building. The department had a very busy year with 108 utility right-of-way use agreement licenses and 83 code enforcement calls. Staff also conducted 706 right-of-way inspection, which consisted of 102 approach inspections, 241 sidewalk inspections, 70 curb inspections, four valley gutter inspections, 127 asphalt patch inspections, 109 ADA curb ramp inspections. In 2022, the department will be working on the South Fifth Avenue and Jason Street Safety Project, which is funded by a grant received this year. They will also be assisting various city departments with projects such as the Indian Hills Pressure Sewer Line Replacement Rehabilitation, construction of the Whitman and Hayes Lift Station, and construction of the Pocatello Creek Booster Station and Transmission Pipeline. In 2021, this fairly new department for the city of Pocatello implemented a standardized preventative maintenance program to ensure all assets are maintained to industry standards. This is the Fleet Services Department that we- it's been in a year?
Two years.
Two years now. It- the in-house machine repaired and maintained approximately 580 fleet assets in accordance with the program. Staff also developed a right sizing model to eliminate redundancy in purchasing and decreasing costs within the city's fleet. Using this model, there were 25 assets disposed of in 2021. For 2022, staff plans to research incorporating alternative energy vehicles into the new capital replacement plan. Doing so will decrease the city's fuel consumption and help to lower the city's carbon footprint. Our geographic information system staff improved our web map application that provides the public with maps including zoning districts, FEMA information, recreation, local trails, and basic reference information for Pocatello and the surrounding areas. The division- the division also helped design the planning department's public outreach maps on surveys for our valley, our vision. And I'm sorry, I'm dying here, so.
You're doing good.
The sanitation department implemented RouteWare, a new asset management program that optimizes routes and creates more efficient processes. The drivers now take pictures to account for each required stop on their route, which has helped streamline the department's customer service efforts. In April 2021, the glass recycling program hit its 1 million pound collection mark and went on it- went on to end our fiscal year with a total of 1,227,240 pounds of glass collected. This represents approximately 3% diversion rate from our county landfill since the beginning- the program began in 2018. 2022 will have the department continue to utilize RouteWare to enhance their garbage and recycle and yard waste collection routes. This year, the Science and Environment Division worked with watershed partners to complete four river access points on the Porton of River between the Gap and downtown Pocatello. I will tell you, if you have not gone and floated that river in the summertime, you should do it. When the water's high and moving faster. If you do it when it's slow, it's gonna take a long time. Staff also began to work on an access point at Douglas Lane north of I-86. The Science and Environment Division also worked with volunteers to install stream crossing signs along the Porton of River and small creeks such as Johnny Creek. This is where our water goes when- when it runs off our streets. Protecting these streams is a priority for our community, which- which prioritizes the Porton of River as- as healthy river and recreational resource. In 2021 was a great year for the street operation department crews, treated 36 miles of roadway with their- with either fog seal, micro seal, or paving. The department also implemented new- new PM peak hour signal timing plans for the Pocatello Creek Alameda Road Corridor and the Upper East Center Street Corridor. The new timing plan improvement improved traffic flow and reduces congestion, saving both time and fuel for motorists. In fact, staff was able to document a 40-second travel time reduction for Pocatello Creek and Alameda Corridor- Alameda Road Corridor. The street operation department also partnered with the Idaho Power Company to utilize their energy-efficient incentive to replace the 250-watt streetlight fixtures with 73-watt LED fixtures at the intersections of High- of US 30 and North Main Street. The resulting wattage reduction allows for ongoing cost savings to the city, and the new long-life LED fixtures will- will require less maintenance, which results in fewer traffic disruptions. Next year, the department plans to focus on the city's- city of Pocatello's stormwater MS4 permit requirements. The Water Department produced and treated 5.1 billion gallons of water in 2021. Although the water is very pure from our aquifers, a small amount of chlorine is added to ensure purity and protection throughout the water system. The city's annual water quality report details the quality of Pocatello's water and lists any contaminants that may have been detected, and we are pleased to be in 100% compliance with the federal drinking- drinking water standards. Crews replaced two miles of water main in the areas of East Lovejoy Streets, Federgill, South First Avenue, North Lincoln Avenue, and Jefferson Avenue this year. The department, in conjunction with the utility department, also upgraded and replaced nearly 209- 2,000- nearly replaced 2,900 encoded receiver transmitter devices throughout the city. Next year, in addition to planned water line replacement projects, the Water Department will be completing the design process for a new booster station and transmission line that will provide additional water and system redundancy to the Highland Bench area. The department will also be drilling two new test wells in the northern section of the city to explore the feasibility of a new production well and redeveloping a replacement for well number two. In 2021, the Water Pollution Control Department cleaned over 1.2 billion gallons of water, removing over 99.5% of all contaminants. Testing by staff ensured that all aspects of the wastewater entering As a result, several projects were identified that will replace aging infrastructure. Collection System staff inspected several miles of new subdivision sewer main line and cleaned over 260 miles of high-pressure and gravity main lines. Laboratory and pre-treatment personnel completed several hundred inspections of businesses and industrial users to ensure compliance with it, with the city's ordinance. In 2021, Pocatello Regional Transit provided over 160,000 passenger trips. The department also purchased a set of vehicle lifts for the maintenance facility. The vehicle lifts have increased the department's efficiency and safety when maintaining and repairing the fleet. The lifts were 100% funded through CARES Act monies. In coordination with the Idaho Transportation Department and as a recipient of the federal transit funding, PRT required two, 2008 low mileage, acquired two 2008 low-mileage cutaway buses at no cost. The buses have been utilized throughout PRT's transit system and have allowed the department to extend the life of other high-mileage buses. In 2022, PRT is looking to replace three fixed route bus shelters in the urban program. The project will replace shelters that have exceeded their useful life and will be ADA compliant. The project is possible through the Federal Transit Administration grant and a local match from the Gate City Rotary and Pocatello Housing and Community Partnership. The department also plans to replace its intelligent transportation system that will update PRT's fixed route and demand response, mobile data terminals, dispatch software, and provide real-time passenger information features for citizens. This project will be funded 100% through CARES Act monies. Now, that was 20 pages. With that, I just might take a little bit of privilege right now and just say that, that the State of the City is in extremely good shape. The finances are in good shape. The employees are doing an incredible job. We talked a little bit about our street department and how they're cleaning the roads earlier and how they're scraping those roads. I can tell you that we could have that discussion about every department we have in our, in the city. The employees are top-notch. There, you don't get better employees and more dedicated employees, and I am grateful for the opportunity to be able to work with them and see what they do and how they take care of the city. A big thank you to them. I want you to know the city of Pocatello is in a very good position as we move forward into the 2022 and beyond. I'm excited to see what we bring this next year, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve this community and serve with this council on this dais right now. With that, thank you very much. That concludes the State of the City address. We will move to Agenda Item 18. Items from the audience. Nobody has signed up for that, so with that, we will move to Agenda Item 19, which is, we will adjourn. Thank you again for joining us tonight. We are adjourned.